Good morning and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, March 19th, 2012. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, I do need to make one announcement. There was an advertised public hearing for a redevelopment plan for Henry County. It was advertised as a public hearing for this morning. That's in reference to job tax credits that Henry County is eligible to receive based on census numbers. But that hearing is going to be postponed, and we will hear that on tomorrow night's agenda. We'll have a full presentation for the board at that time. And with that announcement being made, I'll ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Stany. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. At this time, we are going to have a presentation from the Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau. It's the annual report, and our presenter is Laura Lucre, who is the director. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you all for letting me be here, and thank you for your continued participation with the Henry County Chamber of Commerce Convention and Visitors Bureau. I just want to say thank you also for letting Julie Hoover Ernst be our chairman for the last two years, and I think that you're going to see in this presentation that her leadership has been very, very beneficial for us over the last year. I want to start, though, by saying tourism is economic development. I think just these numbers demonstrate how vital to our economy tourism is. In 2010, which are the most recent numbers, which the state contracts with the U.S. Association of Travel, or excuse me, the U.S. Travel Association, to put together the travel numbers, the travel impact numbers, and they are a year behind when they get released. So the next, the 2011 numbers will be available in September of 2011. But as you can see, $188 million was spent by tourists in 2010, and that's about half a million, or over half a million dollars a day. So that's thanks to our interstate, that's thanks to things like the Speedway and the tournaments that we experienced this weekend, and a lot of other wonderful things that we have here in Henry County. It's $42 million that's being generated by wages, resident wages, for jobs. Over 2,000 jobs are generated by tourism. It is five and a half, a little over five and a half million dollars for local sales tax, and seven and a half million in state tax. And in other words, if you want to put that in terms of it's tourism tax relief, that's what we call it, is a tax savings to our taxpayers. If tourism did not take place in Henry County, if these wonderful attractions that we're so proud of did not, were not here, and tourism did not come and visit them, each household would have had to pay about $208 more in sales tax, like I said, per household, to keep services the same. And I want to move into what we've been working on in the last year, what our 2011 accomplishments were. Starting with our I-75 billboard campaign, if you've driven up from Macon, you have probably seen these billboards. We have six traditional billboards, which are the static ones, and we've just in late 2011 and early '12, we started with some digitals. This is an example of one of our, one of our static billboards. It's just north of the 475 entrance, and this is one of our digitals. You'll see if you come in down 75 South on the Olympus billboard just south, just north of Eagle's Landing. And then also, this year, we've started doing some digitals, like this one here for hairspray for the Henry Players, that is talking about local events that are happening in our community. We did one in late 2011 for the Gift of Lights at the Speedway, trying to promote events that we feel can pull people off of that interstate and get them into our community. So this is one of the six billboards that we'll be doing throughout the year on those digitals, advertising our community events. And you always know that you're doing something right when other people are talking about you. And this is an article in the Macon Telegraph from a writer who does write about travel, and he's saying that he wishes Macon would get on board with promoting. He says that they have so much, and that, he says that he laughs when he comes, if you can read it, he says, "He laughs every time he comes north," or smiles when he comes to town north, and he sees our billboards, because, he says, "Although we don't have the same things that do do, we're putting all of our best feet forward and showing, showcasing what we have." So I just think that's a wonderful testament to when other people who are in the industry notice what you're doing and comment on it publicly. And talk about our website. We launched it last year, February of '11, and since that point, we've had over 1,500 visitors, and about 1,800 to 2,000 visitors a month. Here's an example of what our homepage looks like. You can visit, if you haven't already had a chance to go, I'd encourage you to go and look around and see all the wonderful information that you can get. Here we have a chance, you can see, to advertise one of our local events that's coming up that can change. We can change that all out, as well as if you scroll down a little bit, you can see there's drop-down menus. They can go directly to hotel listings, which leads directly into the next, which is our Book Direct program. And Book Direct is an online booking agent that is like a Travelocity or an Expedia, where you can look at a lot of hotels, but this one, it allows us to pick just the hotels we want, just in our area, and the hotels do not have to pay any type of fee to be a part of this service. It's completely free to the hotel. And so the customer enters the dates that they're going to travel, and then hits Select, they can type, take the type, the location, whatever they want to do, and it'll put the hotels that they're looking for in those dates with what their dates are. And then the best part is that it takes them directly to those hotels' sites to book. So there's no, it doesn't go outside of their site at all. They can see the bookings. We can see, as you can see, we know that 325 people have been directly referred to our hotel website from this engine. We can track it. Also, because so many people are using mobile, mobile phones, to visit the internet, we have launched a mobile site. I read a statistic that said that more people own mobile phones than own toothbrushes. That's saying that more people bought mobile phones probably than bought toothbrushes in 2011. So it's an important meeting to make sure that we are being a part of. In 2011 alone, we had over 2,000 visit, mobile visits, people visiting us on those smartphones. And we didn't launch this mobile site until December, so I think that since we have made it so much easier for people to view our site, you'll see a dramatic increase in that, as well as more and more people are using, using their phones to make travel arrangements. The next is our Visitor's Guide. It is our number-one promotion tool. We use it for almost everything. We produce 35,000 of them. The cost is covered by ad sales, as well as the balance covered by the CBB. We send them to our state and welcome, state welcome centers, regional welcome centers, to local Atlanta-based, sorry, employee lounges, military-based, anywhere there's a large gathering of people. Atlanta has shown up consistently as our second-largest area where people are coming and visiting our website, so we know that that's a market that we really want to explore further. Norfolk Southern's probably one, also one of our biggest. They have a huge training center here in McDonough, and they're having people come in weekly for those trainings, that they're here for weeks at a time, and they give out a copy of our Visitor's Guide to everyone who comes into their class, which is wonderful because they're a captive audience, and they're looking for things to do and eat, places to eat while they're here. Also, these are our number-one item. We put in our gift bags for coaches, and we have tournaments, for reunions, for group tours. If an individual calls and asks for information, this is what we send them. So this is a copy of what our cover looks like. We totally redid the cover in 2011. We kept the same one in 2012 because it just really worked very well for us in '11. We saw a lot more Visitor's Guides disappearing than we had in the past. This is a copy of the Henry County Board of Commissioners Parks and Rec ad that we did. Every city that participates in the county gets a free, a full-page ad in the guide. And then we also added this page this year for a couple of reasons. One, it gives us the ability to cram a lot more information into this limited publication. You can only have 42 pages, and there's just only so much stuff you can put in. With the QR codes, we can send them to our website directly, and they can get information that we just didn't have room to put in. But also, we can track these codes, so it allows us to be able to say, "We know what's working. We know people are coming to the site." We also maintain a Facebook page, just gives us another way to keep in touch with locals, as well as people that may have never visited Henry County, let them know what's going on in the area, what's new, what places there are to stay, or eat, or events, or attractions, just, and just a way to interact, any way to just meet them where they are. We also, in 2011, in May, we purchased the landing pages for Hampton, Locust Grove, and Stockbridge's Trip Advisor page. Now, Trip Advisor is the number-one travel research site in the world. It is very, very respected, and so you want to be able to control what people see when they go there, within reason. So we purchased, we purchased the landing pages for those three pages, which allows us to control, here you can see examples, allows us to control that first picture that they see, along with the first 10. Have these two ads that you can see in the top corners. Those rotate, so we have three per size, so nine ads per page. As well as to list events, and that they link directly to our website, as well as to the main, main event website, links to our Visitor's Guide, links to our website. So it just gives us a lot of ways to reach people who are looking for our product, and to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward. And if you go back, you see that, this also gives us, so we know that these three pages have viewed, been viewed over 2,000 times, or almost 2,000 times, since the reporting was set up in October. We also visit trade, go to trade shows. We do two different types of trade shows. We do the USSA, which is the United States Specialty Sports Association, and we go to market our sports facilities, to baseball tournaments, softball tournaments, and soccer tournaments. We have beautiful, beautiful, wonderful tournaments and facilities here, and I'll talk a little bit more about this because it's such, tournaments are such an important part of our economy here in Henry County, that I want to spend an entire section talking about that. But we do go to the USSA show to talk to those vendors, talk to those coaches, talk to those organizers, people who have sway in the industry, who are looking to either relocate their tournament, or just make sure that we can keep the ones that we currently have. We also do two group tour shows a year. These are your large, 55, 60-person buses with students and group travel. We also, when we go to those shows, we, this is an example of our, not a profile sheet, but a package that we sell. This is a prepackaged tour. They know exactly what they're going to get, and how much they're going to pay for that package, which makes it a lot easier to sell. And this is one of the ones that we sold at the one, excuse me, the group tour show we just got returned from in Kentucky, and it was very, very popular. People like to know what they're going to get. They like, they're very searching for history, and they like to know that this is what they're going to get, this is how much they're going to pay, and it's just going to be very easy. We also do some very traditional advertising. Here you see, the first is the three copies of the ads that we did in Georgia Travel Guide, and you have a copy of this in the packet that I gave you, copy of the Travel Guide. We also do ads in Occasions Magazine. Weddings and meetings are a big market for Henry County. If you looked at the Google Analytics for our website, for January, February weddings, places to get married in Henry County, Event Facilities was our, I think, number four, five, six, seven search keywords. So it's a market we're definitely targeting. And then also, this is an ad we did in a group tour publication. Some special programs that we do, one of which is the Tourism Academy. We invited all of our tourism industry partners that work front desk, hotel front desk, retailers, restaurants, to come participate in this Tourism Academy. We want to make sure that we're putting our best foot forward, and that with these visitors come into Henry County, that they're being greeted with the knowledgeable, hospitable staff. And so this, we did a training session for the first half of the day, where we had a customer service expert come in and talk to them about the best customer service you can give, and what, kind of how to go over and above, and make it just a little bit, little bit different, a little bit special for people who are coming in. And then we took them to several different sites around the county. Here you can see them at the Veterans Museum. This Grace was getting to see the kind of the full weight of what a soldier would carry, and tell you, it really made an impression on them, getting to see this. Most of that class had never been to any of the places we went before. If, when you ask them ahead of time what they knew, what they'd been to, I think Atlanta Mayor's Speedway was the only place they'd ever been, and we went to four or five different attractions. So when they're asked from now on, they'll know. They'll know the museum was a great place to go, and this is what you can do, and this is what you'll see. And then at the end of the day, they graduated with certificates saying that they had completed the program. Another program that we really began working on hard in 2011 was the Camera Ready Program, which is a Georgia program that says, "We are a community that welcome and encourage filming here." We have a contact set up that they can call, one person, me, and I will help them find the location they're looking for, the resources, the contacts, whatever it is that they're needing to bring films here. We've had a good success with this over the last year. Necessary Roughness, which is a USA television program, filmed two episodes here. The Walking Dead was here for about three or four weeks in June, July. And then this was an NBC sitcom filming, a new pilot, featuring Nathan Lane, that was here for all of the day. But in that day, or in preparation for that day, they spent over $20,000 just for that one day of production. That was site, siding, that was parking, that was security. So you can see that this is one reason we're really targeting this industry, because it does have the potential to bring a lot of money to Henry County. Another program that we set up in 2011, late September, September of '11, was geocaching. And if any of you are not familiar with geocaching, it is a real-world scavenger hunt that lets people locate hidden caches with a portable GPS device, and this device leads them to a cache that is filled with either just a log, or some goodies that they can trade out. We have, oh, we, since we launched this, we've had over 150 people find our caches. We've had over 24 people which turn in our passports. What we've done is, in every box, we've put a stamp in, and we've printed these passports that they can print off, and they can take them with them, they stamp it, and they bring it back in, and we'll give them a prize, and lets us know where they're coming from, if they've ever been to these attractions before. And the best part is that it costs less than $100 to set up, and we probably won't have to do nothing else with it, maybe for, buy a new logbook, maybe a stamp every once in a while, once it runs dry. Very, very cost-efficient program, and we are getting some wonderful results for it. This is a family that's geocaching. You see what one of our geocaches look like. And this is one of the comments that we received. This is, "Location is really nice. I plan to come back here, down here with my wife. I would have never known about this location if not for this cache. This place is truly a treasure." And they're talking about Noah's Ark, but they came from Atlanta. They were actually the first people to, one of the first people to complete the thing, the cache, the series, and they just raved. They raved about it on the log. This is the log that they posted. They told everyone that they knew about it, and so we know that they're going to be coming back. We also do a program called Toasted Tourism, and this is our local program to say to our residents, "This is what we have to offer." Here you can see, this is our flyer from our 2011 Toasted Tourism, which we were going to do at Pinola Mountain. We did actually have it, but it poured, so we're, had a low attendance. They're going to redo that at Toasted, at Pinola again next year. You can see a picture. We have, all of our vendors are local tourism partners. We invite all of our tourism attractions, restaurants, hotels, to set up booths, and to tell a little bit about what they are to the people that came through. As you know, race weekend's a huge deal here in Henry County, so we do a lot around, around that weekend. We, this year, we did a package, Race to Henry. This was an ad on some racing websites that we did, that targeted specifically a demographic that we were targeting, and asking them to come to our site, look around, and register. We also did these race buttons. We gave them to, very generously, to hotels, restaurants, anybody who had front desk staff that was going to be seeing race fans. We wanted to make sure that they know that they're very, very welcome here. And we also did these T-shirts. We sold them within the community, as well as gave them out at the race. We had a booth at the Speedway where we handed out information, as well as took registrations for gifts. And we did this promotion, a receipt redemption program, where if people would turn in receipts for Henry County businesses, from the week before to the week, weekend of, we would give them prizes for certain denominations that they turned in. $25 got them one of those T-shirts that you saw. We advertised it a couple of weeks ahead of time, a little bit on our website, on our Facebook page, the change, this, excuse me, the Atlanta Mayor's Speedway advertised it on their Facebook page. We put these flyers that you see in the hotels and in the restaurants, and the rest of it was word of mouth. So it was pretty minimal. We wanted to see how it would go. We had over 16, 16,000, yeah, $16,000 turned in by over 100 people. So we know that the program worked. People were excited about it. I could have, if I'd accepted receipts from Hampton, the Locust Grove, excuse me, the Lovejoy Walmart, I probably could have had over, you know, $30,000 worth of receipts. So many people were turning them in. But they know for next year, and they, they thought it was Henry County, and they thought they were purposely spending money there because they'd seen it. So we know that next year, they will, they will make sure. So that was a very successful program that we will be doing again. Like I said, I'd get back to tournaments. Tournaments are a very big deal. We just had the Super NIT this, this weekend. Last year, when the Super NIT was in town, they had 455 teams, about 335 of them stayed locally, and they spent about $1.6 million. This is $50,000 approximately for our S-Plus, East Plus, and Lost Tax. So as you can see, huge impact on the community. This year, we hosted 470 teams, so you know that those numbers are even greater. And I heard while I was out there, we actually had a booth out there at this weekend, that it was the largest amateur, single-weekend tournament in the world, or in the U.S. at least. It was again, it set the Guinness Book of World Records, it set it last year, and it broke it this year. So we're proud to host that tournament this year, and last year, and just to make sure. That's one reason we work so hard on these tournaments, is that they do bring a lot of money into the community. And our, I mean, and I've heard, I went, at that trade show I went to, they said, "You have the wonderful facilities, you have wonderful hotels, and you have wonderful restaurants that can accommodate us." So we have a, and we're close to Atlanta, and we have Tanger. People come, sometimes just for Tanger, because maybe the wives, mothers don't usually come, but they know. So we have a lot to offer people who are coming.
The first pitch to start the tournament on Friday, and I had asked Julie to take a photograph of the Golden Tornado in action. And hopefully she can share that with us later today.
And speaking of Red Hawk, this is a sign that we have at Red Hawk. It will be on the side right next to the concession stand, and I can tell you after being out there that that is a very busy area. So more and more people just trying to drive people to our website, so they'll know what the options are, that they don't just go to the nearest place that they see and swarm that place, that they'll see everything that there is in the community, and they'll kind of spread out. And this is an example, this is our booth that we had at Heritage Park. We had booths at three parks over the weekend handing out information to visitors. Another thing that we do is, we do promote local attractions, local Henry County. So we did advertising, these are flyers that we did for the 150th. There's reenactments taking place at Nash Farm for 2013, 2015, commemorating the 150th anniversary of the Battle of Atlanta. So we did flyers for this. We also paid for and mailed copies of the Veterans' Wall of Honor and Veterans' Museum brochures. And Radio Disney does advertising for a lot of Henry County Parks and Recs events, including the Easter Egg Festival that's coming up, as well as, last year, they, they did the USSA's World Series tournaments, and the Heritage Christmas Festival. Kind of getting into some sneak peeks of what's happening this year. We did a pad map, which is exactly what it sounds like. It's a map on a pad that you rip off. It's very, kind of a simplified version, so they have just a general idea of where they are. You have a copy of this in the packets that I gave you. It has all of our attractions listed on it, meeting facilities, and with that key at the bottom. And then on the back, we added kind of our relative position to Atlanta, and relative position to a lot of local attractions, so that they can kind of know where we are in the world, and how close we really are, what comfortably south of Atlanta really means. We have some facts and some famous peoples, just so that they have some history on Henry County. And then on the far right, you see that we again use those QR codes, put some more information. That means that we can keep this very up to date, and we can change those restaurants out, add them as we grow, as well as track who's coming. And we also, which is, we need to be back from the printer this week, and I'm very excited, we're doing postcards to be promotional items. We have, doing a series of six. We'll do a package of each, of six of each card, and put them, first of all, in Leadership Georgia, which is going to be here next, excuse me, later this week. We will put these in their, in their bags. And you see that they have a picture on the front, and then on the back, it says where they are, and just as a way to capture their time here, as well as hopefully they'll send these to people, and someone else will then see some of the attractions of Henry County. So that was just a few things from 2012, and a kind of overview of 2011. Does anybody have any questions for me?
I do want to make a comment, because I'm sure citizens wonder how in the world this department is funded, and thanks to a hotel motel bed tax that's charged to those visitors that come to Henry County, a percentage of that goes back to the CBB to, to help promote Henry County. And so I did want to comment on that. Good morning, Kay.
Good morning, Madam Chairman. If I could just say one thing, good morning, Commissioners. Because you all are veterans, with the exception of Mr. Preston, we omitted that portion, but again, for the viewing public, and that is the fact, that state law requires that 2% of the bed tax levied go back to a nonprofit organization established for the distinct purpose of promoting tourism. So we are happy to be your partner and have that responsibility. I do want you to know, once again, that all of those funds are segregated from chamber funds, separate bank accounts, separate accounting process. They are audited annually by an outside auditor, as are all chamber funds. You have in your packet a detailed report of the, what the county contributed to the CBB program, and how each of those dollars were spent. And we are also obligated, since it is public money, to provide those reports to each of your financial departments, so that it can be submitted to the Georgia Department of Revenue, where it is audited again. So I am very pleased to say that in the 10 years that I've been with the chamber, there has never been a question about how this money is spent, being spent appropriately and well accounted for. I also want to add that, just as fast as Laura talks, she works that fast, and she works that hard, and I think you will say that for a community that doesn't have a Stone Mountain, or a Six Flags, or a beach, that we have pretty much maxed out our potential to promote tourism in Henry County. Under Julie's leadership, as the chairman of the CBB, the CDB Board, and Laura's hard work, I don't think you could squeeze much more juice out of this tournament, for, for turnip, for promoting tourism in Henry County. We enjoy working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Does any board member have a question or comment on, about the presentation you just said? Brian?
I'll just go compliment. I see Laura, every time you go to the chamber, she's the one that does all the technology and hooks up everything, and you can see that she's very forward-thinking with the way we're using the bar scanners, the, I like using the social media and all the things that can potentially put us up in front of people, so I wanted to give you a compliment. I thought it was great.
Mr. Holder?
I'd just like to comment on what Kay said about the 10 years that she had been here, and that things had not been questioned. And I want to bring to the fact that it hasn't always been that way, and I want to say thank you to Kay, because several years ago, certainly more than 10, we actually had a delegation of innkeepers and various people here that were, that were challenging, ready to sue about the mixing of, of the motel, hotel motel taxes, and haven't heard that, and I just want to say thank you, Kay.
Anyone else? All right. Great presentation. Thank you. Moving back to the agenda, I do need to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to hear the item as it relates to personal care homes, and I failed to include that initially. I would like to add that after elections and registration, and if someone would make a motion to amend the agenda. A motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to senior services, we have a resolution requesting approving the Second Amendment to the Aging Subgrant Contract with the ARC. Our presenter is Susan Craig, Director of Senior Services, Exhibit Number One. Good morning.
Good morning. This is our Second Amendment to the ARC contract for this year. We have been allocated an additional $1,356 for our Home Delivered Meals program, and we're also, they're going to allow us to transfer $55,491 from our Congregate Meals, which are our senior center meals, to the Home Delivered Meals, to ensure that we pull down all our money this year.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the amendment to the ARC contract. I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Stany, second by Mr. Preston. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. Mr. Bowman?
I'd like to bring Ms. Rita Green to the podium, if you don't mind. We're, we're fixing to have our Miles for Meals fundraising event, which I know that can, I'm going to just say, Mr. Fred Alata delivers meals on wheels, as well as my wife and myself, and it, it really is, it's a good thing to do if you just get an opportunity, because you get to see a lot, you get to see a lot of people when you're dealing with them, and then, once you get into it, and once you deliver them, you get kind of used to seeing them, what hurts is when you get there and they're no longer with us, they passed away. But I would like, I wanted to bring her to the podium, just for, just because we're fixing to do that, and that's a large part of our, of our money for Meals on Wheels. So if you don't mind, please.
Thank you. Good morning. The one thing that, you do lose some when you're delivering, and you do get attached to them, but, you know, I always think you do make such a difference in their lives, because they always look forward to seeing our volunteers, because a lot of times, you are the only one they see during the day. We're having our Miles for Meals Walk, which is May the 5th. It's at the Jason Harper Events Arena. This is our 17th year of walking, where we are the longest continuous fundraiser in Henry County. Like everything else, I'm out, you know, begging, "Come walk with us." It's a family event. We had, last year, we had three sets of four generations walking. We had Grandma, Great Grandma, we have the daughter, the grandkids. We have the fire department with the clowns, we have balloons, some of the seniors bake cakes, we have little cake sales. We have a cookout afterwards. It is a walk, it is not a run, because Susan nor I run. As a matter of fact, I don't think Susan sweats. But anyway. But we have our walk packets where you can get sponsors. We have a wonderful T-shirt this year. So I just want to say, we need supporters, sponsors, and we need people to come out and walk. It starts at nine o'clock, so I'd like to see every one of you there.
It's a walk, but it's very festive.
BJ's always there, and I even let her wear my hat every now and then. But do come. And I want to thank y'all so much for your support.
Thank you, Rita.
Any questions?
Anybody with a question?
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 5th. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Moving on to purchasing, our first item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for natural gas. Our presenter is Rod Gray, Purchasing Director, and that's Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The first item I have is a request to lock into a one-year contract with Georgia Natural Gas for the natural gas services for the county. Actually, some good news, since we haven't locked in, the rates were still fluctuating. If I may, ask for a rate not to exceed .355 per therm. This morning, I could lock at .342. I see no reason in paying more if we do not have to. So if I may, on the resolution amount not to exceed .355.
Board member have a question about taking less, paying less money?
I talked about this. Because I actually went on, you know, whitefence.com, which is a good place to go price everything out, and these rates are unbelievably low. I know it's because we do a lot of volume, but good job on that.
Right, and we're paying what, like, high 40s now?
Forty-eight and a half.
Right, so this is a considerable drop in our per therm rate, so.
It's awesome.
I thank the market more than me, but I'll take the accolades where I can get them.
As volatile as, as natural gas is in pricing with the spikes that it has, if you lock in now, and you're right, Rod, have that, that number, but if you can go lower, you don't, it's kind of like stock market or town, you know, the bond market, you don't ever know what day you lock in. That's a good price. In fact, if you go back probably two years, we were paying about 60 cents a therm, 60, between 60 and 70 cents a therm. That's market is doing that. So the market right now on natural gas is extremely low.
Well, we have a resolution before us to award that to Georgia Natural Gas in a not to exceed 35 cents, 35.50 cents per therm.
Yes, ma'am.
And we have a motion by Mr. Holder, a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to purchase monitors for the new emergency communications facility, and that's Exhibit Number Three.
Yes, ma'am. This is a request to purchase 100 monitors using a state contract with Dell at a price of $15,078. Funds are available in the capital lease escrow account to complete this purchase.
Any board member have a question or comment?
This is also a good price.
Because I went on buy.com, $172.99 is what the monitors are on there, so we're getting a substantial savings on that. So, once again, another good price.
You have a resolution before you authorizing the purchase, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to purchase computers for the new emergency communications facility, and that's Exhibit Number Four.
Yes, thank you. This, this request is for 17 Dell T-1600 computers utilizing existing state contract with Dell at a purchase price of $21,653.58. COPS Technology Grant Funds will be used to complete this purchase.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have a question.
Mr. Stamey?
Mr. Bush, I noticed in this fund, this, this grant was, I think, Don, you were here too, when this, this was originally 175,000 on the grant we got from Homeland Security, correct?
Good morning. Yes, sir. This was a Homeland Security Technology Grant. I believe Mr. Bowman and a couple of you guys went to petition our Congressman for these funds. And what happened is we were just kind of delaying it, so it would fall in line with this project to offset the cost of going into the new facility.
And we only have, what do we have left in that, after we buy the monitors and everything? What do we have left? I know there's furniture being purchased out of this.
Actually, in the technology grant, there should still be about 72,000. There's a couple more things we're going to do. We're buying some additional tablet computers that we're using, along with our emergency management application, and some conference and equipment, and some additional equipment we're putting in our secondary ELC. So the furniture is actually separate. No furniture in this, this is all technology in this grant.
You've got plenty of furniture, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. A lot of people don't know this, but Don has been making trips steadily to the federal building downtown Atlanta, getting some, almost practically free furniture for us to staff that building.
I could tell you that, with the exception of probably six offices, 85% of our building is furnished through government surplus furniture, and we've been able to actually outfit multiple county offices. And this week, we're going to break down the trailers and go in and finish furnishing our building, and we'll make all of additional furniture available to all the county departments that need furniture.
Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
All right, if there's no further questions or comments, you have a four-year resolution authorizing the purchase of equipment from Dell Marketing in the amount of $21,653.58. And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Motion approved by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for access, control, and door lock equipment for the new emergency communications facility, and that's Exhibit Number Five.
Yes, thank you. This is a request to purchase Salto and Keymark Door access equipment for the new 911 Operations Center. This is a sole source purchase with Atlanta South Safe and Lock in Stockbridge, Georgia, at a total cost of $20,769.50. Funding is available in the SPOS III Fund.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Preston?
The only thing I was going to ask is, I mean, I couldn't find any resources for prices. Is this in line with everything we've paid in the past on this type of technology?
It is, and as I stated there, the sole regional provider. So as far as market trends, we don't have a lot of latitude. If we want to buy this equipment, we're located here and we have to buy it from them.
But is it within market?
Yes, it is. It is within market.
There are no further questions. You have before you a resolution awarding a bid to Atlanta South Safe and Lock in the amount of $20,769.50.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid for full-depth reclamation on various county roads, and that's Exhibit Number Six.
Yes, thank you. The recommendation for this project is to award the contract to Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction in the amount of $464,399. The funding for this project is split between SPOS II and III. The District II portion will be funded from SPOS II. Districts III and V will be funded from the SPOS III.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding the bid to Atlanta Paving and Concrete in the amount of $464,399. And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting award of a bid to construct the new transit facility, and that's Exhibit Number Seven.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The recommendation is to award this project to Mooney Construction Incorporated with the lowest responsive bid of $997,000. Funds are available through the SPOS, is, what is it, FTA? It's an FTA grant, so. Funds are available through the FTA Section 5307 Urbanized Funds for Capital Assistance.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Stamey?
Rod, let me ask you something. Out of these, it looks like the first 11 are real close together.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bowman, you probably could help me with this, but out of these first 11, how many of these contractors are actually Henry County-based?
I, I do not have that information in front of me right now.
Does anybody know the answer to that? But you recognize any of these names?
I don't think any of them. I just, I don't think any of them.
Would you like to, to bypass this item and allow them to check that? Because I know where you're going, you're going with the local vendor, 10% or 5% privilege for a local vendor.
Is there any way we could find that out in this course of this meeting?
No.
There is none?
None.
That's sad, that we've got a building in this area. We, Reed, you heard the same comments I heard last week about different contractors wanting to bid, and them not even being allowed to, they're allowed, but they can't get the numbers, because sometimes they think, like for this, for instance, this guy here who won, they think he's an out, he's an out-of-county contractor coming into our county to build our local building, and if he submits a change order anywhere along there, it changes the whole, the whole price structure. So if you would, be sure you watch this, and Rod, both of y'all will be involved in this thing. Reed, you heard probably what I heard last week too, from a couple of local guys, that they just quit bidding because they don't even think that the playing field is level right now.
Commissioner, if I may, I'll correct myself. Number four is a local contractor in Stockbridge.
Is he within, Mike?
The, the, the local vendor preference that you were discussing, I believe stops at $100,000. This is a million-dollar bid. We do not.
It does exceed the cap.
Right. This cap, this would not be considered in that local vendor privilege.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the bid of Mooney Construction Incorporated in the amount of $997,000. And I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. And again, we want to mention that this is grant funding that is building the facility. It's not general fund money, it's grant money. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting authorization to purchase turnout gear for the fire department. That's Exhibit Number Eight.
Yes, thank you. The recommendation is to purchase this equipment using an existing annual contract as bid out by the county, purchasing 30 line apparel, five force turnout jackets, and 30 line apparel turnout trousers, in a total price of $53,097. The funding for this is available, I believe, through the fire department's budget.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Mr. Preston?
You know, I complimented you on the other ones, because they were good. This was the only one that I kind of brought it to your attention before the meeting, that when I went and tried to compare prices with online retailers, it looked like we were paying about a 25% premium. Is, did you, were you able to find out anything?
I did find some information. The product that you had referred to me was the same, was made by the same vendor, but we are asking for, the specs developed by the fire department were for the V-force, and the jacket you referenced was a JV-24. The, this main difference was the outer shell. The V-force has an armor outer shell, the JV-24 has a fusion, and according to the vendor, there's a pretty substantial quality difference in the outer shell. Another major difference between the V-force, which is what we're requesting, and the JV-24, the JV-24 is more of a standard off-the-shelf purchase, whereas there's not the ability to custom fit. The mobility features built into the V-force aren't there. It doesn't come with lettering, patches, flashlight hooks, or the extended pocket sizes.
Were you able to at least give a price for what they could do, that same piece for it, so we could compare and make sure?
Not in time, no. As I stated to you, if the board wishes, you could, you could request, you could authorize this as a not-to-exceed purchase amount, and I could certainly contact the vendor to see if they have any latitude in their pricing.
Sounds like a.
I just want to make sure, you know, obviously, we had that budget meeting last Thursday. Money's not exactly laying around, and this is, safety is primary concern, but we also need to watch the pennies, so.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to approve or authorize the purchase in a not-to-exceed $53,097?
Yeah, that would, that would be better.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Preston. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries four zero. And please note, the Commissioner Stamey is out of the room at this time.
Thank you. Madam Chair, if I may, at the next agenda, I'm going to present a list of surplus vehicles that I would like to sell, as well as mechanism, that I'd like to sell them through. If you could, any questions you have, please feel free to contact me. I want, I want everyone to be comfortable with how we're going to proceed. I just wanted to give you a heads up that that should be in your agenda packet for the next meeting.
Great, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Moving on to SPOS Capital Projects, the first item is a resolution requesting approval of a budget amendment regarding the State Route 81 and Old Highway 3 Transportation Project. Our presenter is Rocky Romero, SPOS Transportation Project Director, and that's Exhibit Number Nine. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and board members. State Route 81 and Old Highway 3 is a designated SPOS III Transportation Project. A budget amendment in the amount of $2,322,664 needed to cover the roadway, construction, and related costs. Funding for this budget amendment is available in the SPOS III, Bill Gardner Parkway and Western Corridor accounts. I'll take any questions.
So these are transfers from other District II projects to a District II project?
That is correct.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item?
I have one, Madam Chair.
Mr. Holder?
I just want to confirm in the public that the $1 million coming from Bill Gardner is the District II money, and that District I still has $4 million in Bill Gardner's SPOS III account. Is that correct?
That is correct. If you look at the budget sheet, it's included in there.
I saw it.
So we, we do maintain the $4 million, which is part of District. We combine on our budget, of course, is Bill Gardner, we don't separate District One or Two, but we do have it. We understand they're separate, and we'd still show in $4 million for District One.
And also, for the record, there was actually $6 million originally on Bill Gardner Parkway, $2 million from District II, and $4 from District I. $1 million had already been taken away from Bill Gardner by District II's previous Commissioner, and now this is the remaining portion of Bill Gardner that's being removed, correct?
That is correct. And that other million, that other million didn't go anywhere. It was $1 million that it was put on, basically on hold, because of, all the district had to.
Say that one more time.
The $1 million didn't go to any other account. Just make it clear that is, if money comes available, hopefully with the SPOS revenues going up, that $1 million may, may come back. It just was put on hold as part of, every district had to hold $5 million and change. This is back when, when we started the program.
That's when we did those cuts, where the SPOS collections were not coming in, and every district had to go and reduce their, their project list by $5 million. So that first.
I'm very familiar with it.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, we don't need to get into the discussion today about it, but that was, there was quite a heated meeting here one day about it, and why it was being cut and what happened. Anyhow, I just want to be sure that District I's $4 million and Bill Gardner is still safe and sound.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? If not, there is a resolution before you approving the transfer of funds from Bill Gardner and the Western Corridor to State Route 81 and Highway 3 District II funds to a District II project. Mr. Preston, I'll look to you for a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Preston, and second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company regarding the State Route 81 and Old Highway 3 Transportation Project. That's Exhibit Number 10.
Yes, with improvements of the intersection at Old State Route, State Route 81 and Old Highway 3, there's no need to submit plans and specifications to Norfolk Southern Railroad Company, for which there will be working or reviewing our plans, and also, there's some signals, railroad signals, that they're going to have to be relocated in the design, preliminary design. The $25,000 is for preliminary design and construction engineering, does not include the actual construction of the relocation of the signals. I just want to make it, make it clear that the $25,000 is for, just for Norfolk Southern, be able to review our plans and be able to move on with the project.
I think we are all familiar with the issues surrounding railroad crossing. We've dealt with that many times before, but if there are any questions or comments pertaining to this item, I will entertain those. Okay? If not, you have a resolution before you that is approving the $25,000 engineering and inspection improvements for Norfolk Southern, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Preston to approve, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Rocky, if you please.
Sit down, I need to make a comment.
You can come on up if you want to, Terry, it's just going to be brief. I just wanted to make a comment about Eagles Landing Parkway. Been getting, you know, my regular calls. We're very close to removing all the barrels once we get all of the sidewalks paved that are currently, that they're working on actually today.
That's correct. Commissioner, all the paving was completed last Friday. Some paving is done. Now they're working on sidewalk, they worked Saturday on that, too. They actually have a sidewalk machine. That's a new one for me, I haven't seen one of those, so I'll be going after this, going over there to check that out. It should move the process quicker using the machine, so hopefully, within three to four weeks, all the concrete work will be completed. At that point, we will open the lanes. There's still going to be a lot of cleanup and dressing up on the shoulders, but we can do that without impeding traffic.
But we can open the lanes, because what's happening now is they're closing a lane. This morning, you go and you're in one lane. This afternoon, you come back, you're in another lane, and it's.
And that's correct.
It's causing some confusion with, you know, a lot of the residents in the area. They know to slow down, but some of the other residents that are just kind of going from point A to point B and passing through, they're flying down through there, and they're not paying attention, so there's some, so you think it's going to be three more weeks before you get the sidewalks?
I think about three, because the other thing that they're doing, there's a lot of thermal work to be, this is the striping. They've been doing that at night, and there's still a lot of thermal work to be done, and it's about two and a half miles of road, so you can imagine, there's a lot of handwork that they got to actually push a cart and put this thermal plastic, the striping. So I feel comfortable to say three, no more than four weeks to have everything completed.
I think that'll be good, because a lot of them in that area watch this program, so it kind of helps to bring an update to that. Thank you, Rod.
You're welcome. On Ferby Road, all the staking is completed. We're working on getting the signs, relocation cost back to us, and also doing some appraisals. There's a lot of, there's a lot of businesses out there, and a lot of those, we've got to have individual appraisals be done. So we're working on that. We're actually going to meet with our appraisals. We're going to have, we're going to have at least two because of the volume of work later this week, and hopefully, by the end of the week, we'll start actually knocking on the doors and getting some roadway on that project.
I have a question for Terry. Terry, a couple of months ago, you had started your work on the Austin Road-Swan Lake intersection. It may be time for us to start looking at revisiting that. Where, and I just noticed that, I saw, I just noticed some stakes out by the elementary school, I think it was yesterday. Could you update the citizens on where we are with the, with those stakes and what's going on in that area?
We're doing right away acquisition as well for the Fairview-Austin-Swan Lake project, and I didn't check before I left this morning, but I would say we're probably at least three-quarters of the way through that process. So we still have a few parcels, I think, left, but we're good ways on that. Should complete probably within a week or two, I would think.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bowman, I'm sure you've probably noticed this, too, on the Eagles Landing project. I know we had a little bit of a slowdown initially, but now that the company's gotten back to work, they're working seven days a week, and they're working very late into the evening, so they've made tremendous progress. I thought we would be further behind than we are, and I think they've made great strides in getting that project complete. So I just wanted to comment about that with the contractor.
They have. There was just a couple of little hiccups, and we got past the hiccups, and they've gone, they've gone, you know, full speed ahead, basically. One of the things, too, and I've been telling everybody April 1st on the barrels, so I'm pretty close then, so.
No, 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 May 1st, excuse me, May 1st, on moving the barrels.
I told you wrong on that. I told them that it was going to be the 1st of May before we got the barrels moved. I said April, but I had a senior moment there. But no, it is, it has progressed, and it's going to be a huge help for moving traffic through Henry from, you know, from District 2, District 5, District all the way through to, you know, Georgia 20. I mean, it, there's a lot of traffic on it now, and it's only going to get more, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Moving on to Public Works, we have a resolution authorizing the chairman and/or vice chairman to sign all new utility service agreements. Our presenter is Terry McMichael, Public Works Division Director. That's Exhibit Number 11. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, board members. Henry County often has needs to have utilities connected to such things as buildings, traffic signals, parks, pavilions, and other things. Authorizing the chairman or vice chairman in her absence to sign these utility agreements will help expedite the process and keep our projects on schedule. Very, quite often, for instance, on signals, contractor will get it up, we need to get it hooked up. In order to do that now, we're having to bring that item to the board for signature, so it would certainly help us in our SPOS projects and Mr. Burkhalders' capital projects, I think, if the board would give the chairman that authority to do that, and we have briefly talked with the county attorney on this as well. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right, if not, you have before you a resolution authorizing the chairman or vice chairman to sign all new utility service agreements as it pertains to utility connection, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance to amend certain sections of the Unified Land Development Code to reflect the inclusion of the Little Cotton Indian Creek and Pates Creek watershed protection districts. Our presenter is Nick Griffith, Stormwater Department, and that's Exhibit Number 12. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Good morning, Commissioners. Last year, in 2011, the Henry County staff and Henry County Water and Sewer Authority and some of the neighboring jurisdictions began preparing for a meeting, which is required by the Metro North Georgia for the water planning portion of our requirements with the MPDES permit and things of that nature. In preparing for this meeting, we discovered that there were two reservoirs that are currently not being protected. These are two public drinking water reservoirs in Henry County that are not included in the ULDC Watershed Protection Ordinance. The Georgia Department of Natural Resources environmental planning criteria mandates that local jurisdictions in place state-required minimum protection within the watersheds that provide public drinking water. Based on this, the Henry County Stormwater Department recommends that we adopt these minimum requirements. Both of the reservoirs in question are owned and operated by Clayton County. Section 3.047 makes up provisions for the watershed and are separate from the Henry County Water and Sewer Authority watershed protection reservoir requirements, which are stricter than the minimum state requirements. We've got the Water and Sewer Authority here. We've had an opportunity to talk through this with them. They're on board with what we're getting ready to move forward with. Any questions?
Well, another requirement, the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, I serve on as the chairman of the Board of Commissioners, but I was able to designate Lindy Farmer to serve in that, in my place, because he certainly has a greater understanding of these matters than I do, and so he's been part of this conversation with this organization, and I think that he is in full support of approval of this, and it is required by law, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? All right, if not, you have before you, is this a public comment? Do we have to take public comment on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak as it relates to the recommendations of the Metropolitan North Georgia Water Planning District, I will ask you to come forward at this time. All right? If not, if there are no questions from the board, I'll look to you for a motion to approve the amendments.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Holder, is there a second? Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Nick. Moving on to elections and registration, we have a resolution requesting authorization to amend the Henry County alcohol ordinance. Our presenter is Janet Shalnutt, Director of Elections, and it's Exhibit Number 13. Good morning.
Good morning. We have a small change, and I believe Lynn's making some copies and bringing them out. Okay. Okay. But anyway, this has to do with Senate Bill 10, where malt beverages and wine for retail sales on Sunday. Back in December, the board passed a resolution to allow it to go on the March Presidential Preference ballot. And on that ballot, it passed 12,515 votes to 9,788, with 56% of the voters saying yes. We had to do some ordinance change a little bit, and we did some cleanup language, kind of in the area of on premises and off premises, just to kind of make a distinction between the two, because this is the first time we've had to add language as on Sunday sales. This has an effective date for March 20th, which would be tomorrow, but it would go into effect for the next Sunday, because this gives time for them to make any changes that they might have to with getting the licensing, but it would be in effect for next Sunday. Basically, it only is in unincorporated county beer and wine only. There is no distilled spirits stores whatsoever in unincorporated county. So this is for beer and wine only for Sunday sales.
And Janet, all four cities had this on their ballot back in November, is that correct?
Uh-huh.
And it passed in all four cities?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
All four cities, and then I heard on the news this morning where one of the counties did not put, when you're in unincorporated county and you have a countywide ballot, you put everybody on it, county, city, too, to cover the whole county entity. One county left it off, and they're going to have to go back and do it again.
Redo the whole election?
Uh-huh.
They had to redo, they're going to redo the whole election?
They're going to have to do the whole election again.
Wow.
But we covered that area, so, anyway. But this is what is, all four cities passed it in their November municipal ballot. We passed it in the March Presidential Preference, and this is just ordinance changes to allow these Sunday sales.
And Ms. Wiley, you had some corrections that you were going to make or changes?
Just some, I guess, some corrections that will make it read a little easier. On the subsection A, the next to last sentence that says Monday through Saturday, we want like a comma inserted and put, and insert the word between 12:30 and 11:30 p.m. on Sunday. So that will read that the, no sales will be allowed at any time except between 7:00 a.m. and midnight, comma, Monday through Saturday, comma, and between 12:30 p.m. and 11:30 p.m. on Sunday. And that's the language that references the ballot initiative that just passed. We think that will make it read a little cleaner by inserting those changes.
Okay. All right. Does any board member have a question or comment about those changes? If not, you have before you an amendment to the ordinance, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holmes to approve? You have a question?
Second with the attorneys in charge.
Second with the attorneys amended language, and yours was with the attorneys amended language. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next item was the item that we amended the agenda for, and that's an ordinance of Henry County, Georgia, establishing a moratorium barring the acceptance and/or approval of any applications, licenses, or permits relating to personal care homes located within unincorporated Henry County, enacting a moratorium for a period of up to 90 days. And our presenter on that is going to be Sherri Hobson Matthews, who is our Director of Planning. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and board members. As Chairman Mathis has indicated, planning staff is coming before you this morning for the enactment of a 90-day moratorium. In light of some inconsistencies, conflicting provisions, and ambiguity surrounding the board's intents, intentions during the May 19, 2009, public hearing regarding personal care homes, planning staff in consultation with our county attorney feels that it is most appropriate to enact this ordinance, I mean, this moratorium, so that we can get a clear understanding of the intent on how we want to regulate personal care homes. Staff will certainly go back and revisit the previous board meeting in minutes and look at surrounding jurisdictions to make sure that, one, we're in line with what other jurisdictions are doing, but we're also in line with what the intentions were at the time that the Unified Land Development Code was adopted. Should you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you establishing this moratorium for a period of 90 days, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is District 1, appointment to the DFAX Board.
Madam Chair, I had a vacancy to occur last week. I do not have the appointment ready for today, but I just wanted to make the board aware that there was a vacancy on that board.
Okay, and that'll just be forthcoming in weeks ahead. Thank you, Mr. Holder. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Deputy County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, tomorrow, March 20th, at 6:30 p.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, April 2nd, at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting, and Tuesday, April 3rd, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular board meeting. At this time, I need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation, personnel, and land acquisition matters.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero.[1706.32] I need a motion to reconvene into public session.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. We stand adjourned.